It is 5:30. I will call this regular city council meeting for Tuesday, September 8th, 2020 to order. If you would join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, according to Minnesota statute 13D dot 021, it allows a meeting to be conducted over the phone or by electronic means, given the following conditions: the mayor has determined an in-person meeting, or a meeting conducted under section 13D dot 02 is not practical due to a health pandemic. The mayor and all councillors participating in the meeting can hear one another and all can hear the discussion. We do have councillor Kraus that is on the phone, and I believe he can hear us, and can we hear you?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. At least one member of the council is physically present, and all votes will be conducted during a roll call, so each member can vote on the issue. Joe, if you're willing to vote in order, we can go that route.
Absolument.
Okay. Please note that the full city council is present. The first item on our agenda is to do the approval of the minutes from August 17th, 2020. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed...
Agenda.
Yeah, I missed the agenda. First item would be to approve the agenda with any additions to the agenda. We have a handful of additions under old business. We have the city attorney title opinion letter. Under new business, item number three, request an exception from electronic noise ordinance. Under Public Works Committee recommendations, approve a green acre sign and donation from Citizens for Bacchus AP, and city attorney pending criminal blight cases. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the agenda with those additions.
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Deech, we have a second by councillor Briggs. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Now, we will do the approval of the minutes from August 17th. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Briggs. We have a second by councillor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have the special city council minutes from August 21st, 2020. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes?
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Briggs. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by councillor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, so the motion carries with four for the motion, and one abstention. Next, we have the minutes of August 31st, 2020. That also was a special city council meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes?
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by councillor Briggs. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have the transfers and claims to the resolution. We have to fund 101, the general fund, from the 812 lodging tax fund, a total of $380.11. Accounts payable, regular city of International Falls claims of $2,093,576.42. Airport commission claims of $26,770.61. Airport cash flow claims of $3,085,219 even. We have no Phase 1 claims. We have runway reconstruction project Phase 2 claims in the amount of $2,802,666.87. And Phase 3 runway reconstruction project of $59,088.85. For a total amount of payable claims of $8,67,321.75. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution?
Move.
We have a motion by councillor Kraus.
Second.
Second by councillor Buller. Discussion, questions, concerns?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Could somebody please explain the $3 million in the airport commission cash flow claims, just for clarification, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
City administrator, do you want to take that one?
I'm not following the question.
On the accounts payable claims, airport commission cash flow claims of $3,085,219?
Certainly, Mayor, there's reimbursement that came in, and so this is to authorize payment to the city and to the county in equal shares for the amount that came in in reimbursements from the FAA.
So half of that is going to be coming to our general fund, and half of it will be going to the county?
Yes, that's correct.
So it's basically a pass-through?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted that to be clear.
All right, any other questions or concerns? And thank you councillor Kraus, that was going to be a question that I asked too, just for clarification as well. All right, hearing none, I will call the question.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, that means we have four for the motion, and one abstention, motion carries. Next, we have audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring something to the attention of the city council? Anybody online? You would have to unmute yourself. All right, you will also have an option at the end of the meeting to bring something to the council's attention. Next, we have opening bids or quotes. We have approval for a quote of $7,582.31 for the Physio Control Stryker Medical, for three McGrath Video Langroscope packages for the ambulance department. We would be able to utilize CARES funding for that. Chief Menasse, do you want to give us a little background on that?
Thank you, Mayor. So with the CARES money that we've received for the ambulance side, some of that stuff we can use as for equipment. Where we're kind of lacking a little bit is the McGrath Video Laryngoscope. We have one right now that travels between four ambulances, whichever one is the primary rig, so this is an opportunity for us to get one on each rig. The primary use for it is innovation, so if we're getting an advanced airway, if the medics are getting an advanced airway, it's a device they use to do that. So currently, it lives with the T1 Hamilton vent that we carry, although this could be used without the vent as well, and should be used without the vent. So it would be beneficial for us to have one in each ambulance. So this is just a way to utilize some CARES money, get some uniformity in our ambulances, and not be moving a piece of equipment from ambulance to ambulance. On the information side of this, I did talk about the T1 Hamilton below that. We did get an updated quote from them yesterday, I believe it was, came back at higher than $16,000. It was, I believe, around $21,000, so that'll be an ask at probably the next council meeting, is to upgrade and get one more vent as well. So the vent, as you know, with coronavirus and COVID, that was one of the big deals, was having shortages of vents and airway supply equipment, so this is why we're kind of attacking this with our CARES funding, or wanting to attack this with our CARES funding.
Anyone have any questions for Chief Menasse regarding the purchase?
I guess my only question that I would have is, I understand why we're getting it, because we have the CARES Act money, and we have one in one rig, we have three other rigs. When the life cycle ends on this, is this going to be a new product that we're going to have to purchase over and over again, or is this something that we can, we're going to go back to just one later, just long-term?
No, so there are parts of the device that are disposable, so the bulk of the device is reusable, the part that actually enters the airway is disposable and interchangeable. So I don't foresee not using this device for quite a period of time.
Okay.
So the current one we have is, I believe, at least two years old, maybe three years old, and our intention always was to upgrade and get four, and this is just the opportunity to do so. And I do want to make one comment. This particular video laryngoscope is only made by Physio Control and only available from Stryker Physio Control, so that's why there's no competitive bid there. It's the only place you can get it, and it's state match, or state bid price, so.
Okay. All right, well, chair would entertain a motion to approve the quote of $7,582.31.
Move.
Motion by councillor Briggs?
I'll second.
We have a second by councillor Kraus. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Does this include the Hamilton vent?
It does not. The Hamilton vent is something separate. I just included the Hamilton for council information.
The motion just includes the...
Correct.
I just was confused on that, but, okay.
Yes, the only reason I brought it up is, I apologize, our CARES Act money was right around, I have to look up the exact number, but in the neighborhood of $36,000. So that's how we wanted to use that $36,000, so I brought it up for information purposes. I would have liked to have this in one proposal, but we did not have the updated quote until yesterday, so we'll kick it back to the next council meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have to remove from the table the final plat for first addition to the industrial business park. Chair would entertain a motion to remove that from the table?
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by councillor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries. It is now officially before us. City attorney, do you want to go over your title opinion letter for the plat?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Minnesota title did the title opinion on it, because they're experts in that stuff, and I'm really not. So I'm relying upon their opinion, and they've examined the abstracts and everything. So in my opinion, this can proceed in accordance with city ordinance section 12-4, and everything now appears in order.
Okay. So at this time, if it is properly before us, and we have the blessing of our city attorney to move forward, chair would entertain a motion to approve the final plat of the first addition to the industrial park.
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by councillor Deech. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we go to the consent agenda. We have two items on today's consent agenda. The first is the reappointment of Shayla Spry to serve as the City Beach camp host in 2021 from Memorial Day weekend through Labor Day weekend. And the second one is to authorize staff to see quotes for the purchase and installation of security access system for the city buildings. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Buller.
Second.
Second by councillor Briggs. Question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have the mayoral proclamation for declaring National Rail Safety Week, September 21st through the 27th. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that proclamation?
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Deech.
Second.
We have a second by councillor Briggs. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have authorize and sponsor iFalls Nice to Use City Beach for two free movies on September 11th and, should be the 18th, for The Great Outdoors and Jaws. After having a discussion with the other members of iFalls Nice this weekend, we saw a huge drop-off on the amount of people that utilized the movie in the Falls High School parking lot, and we figured with the event being at City Beach, and it getting colder, and it just did not make sense. So what we're going to do is, we're going to offer those two movies again free next year in the summer, when it's nicer and warmer, and it should be a better use of the thing. So at this time, I don't believe we need to take any action on this, because those two bonus shows will not be shown this year. So next, we will go to item number three, which is request for exemption from the noise ordinance, section 1057. Zachary Schofield, city administrator, you want to give background on that? Zach contacted me and said he would not be able to attend tonight's meeting because of being out of town.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, Mr. Schofield had sent me an email last week, and had expressed an interest in having a private wedding ceremony and event at his property. He lives at 1527 Ninth Avenue East, and he would like to have the city grant an exception to the electronic noise restrictions that we have in our ordinance, and that's in section 10-57. The event he's intending to have would be music from a DJ. There'll be equipment at his property. He wants to start around 7:30 PM, and then end the music at about 11:45 PM, and this would occur on Saturday, September 12th, so this coming Saturday. He says that there's no immediate neighbors living with, living residents to the east of his property, and he is intending to have the speakers point in that direction. He's anticipating about 70 guests will be in attendance. I asked him about parking, and he responded that parking would be planned along 15th Street east of where his property residence is. And there's a gravel portion of 15th Street, so he's planning that they would park east of his property on Ninth Avenue. And then there'd also be some parking on Ninth Avenue to the south of his residence. He says he has reached out and contacted his immediate neighbors regarding the event, and asking them to allow some parking on their properties. And he says that he's also offering ride service for those staying at hotels in the area, so that he can keep traffic to a minimum. So again, he's requesting council authorization to allow a variance from the noise ordinance for the times that I indicated, which again, would be from 7:30 PM to 11:45 PM. And he, I guess I would draw the council's attention to the second page in the attachments. I've highlighted section 10-57 that talks about electronic noise. The bottom of the page, it says "exceptions" in number four, which reads "Machines or Devices for the Production of Sound on or in Authorized Emergency Vehicles Would Be an Exception from the Noise Restrictions or in Functions Authorized by the City Council." So that's why this request is brought before you today.
Okay. So chair would entertain a motion to accept the exception from electronic noise for this Saturday for Mr. Schofield?
So move.
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Deech. Do we have a second? Councillor Kraus?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Please?
For Administrator Anderson, you said the neighbors approved of this, is this correct?
Well, he indicated that he's reached out to them. I've asked him to contact them to make sure that they were aware of it, and so he's been in contact with them to allow parking on some of their properties. So if they're going to allow parking on their properties, they probably have no objection to the noise on that night.
Fine. Any other discussion? I happen to talk to Zach about this about a week ago too, and one of the things that I thought was pretty forward-thinking is to bring it to the city council and have the conversation beforehand, rather than having the police called, and then try to deal with it after the fact. So I appreciate Mr. Schofield and trying to get permission rather than forgiveness. So chair would call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have a resolution approving the application for an exempt permit for the Minnesota Deer Hunters Association Trails End Chapter for a drawing to be held on November 24th at Bacchus Community Building.
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Briggs. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have a resolution approving the sales of various parcels for tax forfeiture property located within the city limits of International Falls, in response to Kooching Land Commissioner. City administrator?
Well, Mayor, periodically, the county authorizes a sale of tax forfeit properties via auction, and by statute, prior to that occurring, public entities are authorized to request purchase of the properties for a public purpose. And so I reached out about a month ago to the supervisors in each of the departments, asked them to review this parcel listing, and determine if there was any that they envisioned would be helpful or necessary for a city purpose, in which case we could make a request to have it conveyed to the city versus going out for public auction. And I'm not aware of any properties from the staff that have an interest in it, so I prepared this resolution for the council to authorize putting the properties up for public auction, or for public entities to potentially take if they see the need for it. Again, there's 17 parcels. They're listed in-depth and identified in the information that was provided by the land commissioner for the county, which is Nathan Hybel. And the last time, I believe, they did this process was in 2017. So they do it every few years, three or four years.
Okay. All right, chair would entertain a motion to, oh, we're not accepting any of them, are we? Yeah, we're just approving the sales for various properties for the county to take action, correct?
Yes, and I'm just going to mention one of the properties, I noticed when I was paging through here, and it's in the International Falls Business Park, where we had just approved the plat for the first addition to that. It's about three or four pages from the back of it. And I would point out, in block one, lot two, is the old, I guess it's known as the Fish Factory, and it looks like that lot's, I know the county was going through a quiet title action to try and remove any liens or something. I don't have any history. I haven't reached out to the county about this, but I do see that that lot is one of them that's on this list. And I don't know if KITA members have had any conversation with their staff about this being available or not, but I just wanted to draw your attention to it before you took action on the draft resolution.
Well, one of the questions that I would have on it is, on that particular plat, well, all of them, if we say we want them, it has to go to a public purpose, right? I mean, we can't, we can't purchase or take these properties and do anything other than make a park out of it, or a parking space, unless we were to buy it at auction. Is that correct?
Well, there's actually a couple of, we don't necessarily have to buy it. It's dedicated to us, and we have to pay market value for it, or a direct sale for market value for a public purpose. It says "or a free conveyance for one of seven specified public uses," and that's identified in the Department of Revenue information. I don't know what those seven uses are off the top of my head. I've looked at them in past years, but...
So I think what my concern is, is number one, I don't think that it makes sense for the city or the county to take possession of that property, because if it has to go to a public purpose, that is not the right use for that property. That property's best use is going to be on the free market, to be able to be sold or purchased, for development or whatever, whoever wants to make that. So it would be, my thought, that whether the city doesn't want, I don't think the city should take it, and I also don't think the county or KITA should, because they're all governmental entities, and they would not be able to utilize that for the best use of the property. Does that make sense in how the law reads?
Well, I think if there was a purpose that you wanted to use it for, you could, if it's a public person. I'm just throwing out an example, but just say a public works garage for the county or the city. It's a building that has a rooftop on it. The roof is in a deteriorated condition, has a zero lot line setback essentially with the property to the next of it, and there's actually an interconnecting walkway. It makes the most sense for that particular property in order to use it. I think most public entities, public objectives are to increase the tax base, increase job creation and potential in the community, and by a private party purchasing it and building out the lot and the building, it would do those two things.
So whoever purchases it, are they going to have to pay the back taxes? Because I believe we have, we have liens on that property, do we not?
I don't know.
All right. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution to approving the sale of various parcels of tax forfeit property located within the city limits of International Falls.
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Briggs. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by councillor Buller. Should have been here. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have resolution in support of adopting, I'm sorry, declaring equipment as a surplus from the Police and Public Works Department, and authorize a public auction online via Do bid. Please give us some background on this, even though I am well aware of what we are doing here, because this is good stuff.
Well, Mayor, we have three vehicles through the police department. Each of the vehicles have over 100,000 miles on it. One's a 250, 2015 Ford Taurus, one's a 2017 Explorer all-wheel drive, and the third is a 2018 Ford Explorer all-wheel drive. And these vehicles have been replaced with newer vehicles with lower miles, so we're asking that the council declare these as surplus, so they can go out for bid and purchase on the open market. By open market, it would be through Do bid, which is an online bidding agency. And so that's the equipment that would be available from the police department. The public works department has an assorted array of equipment, including trucks, asphalt trailer lift, lawn mowers, pallet of bricks, tree guards, chain fencing, garbage cans, there's just a whole number of things, urinal, toilet bowls, filing cabinets, metal drawers, et cetera, that would be available also through the same process. And so in order for us to do that, the charter requires that we have the city council declare that surplus, and then allow that to go out for purchase by the public through auction.
So you're saying we're going to have more space?
That's what we're hoping, certainly.
All right, so chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution declaring the vehicles and equipment from the police and public works as surplus, and authorizing the sale of them.
So move.
We have a motion by councillor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by councillor Briggs. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Would this auction be this fall yet?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second, we have a motion and a second to adopt that resolution. Chair would call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have a resolution for the adoption of a bonding bill by the Minnesota Legislature. City administrator, you want to give us a little background on that?
Yes, Mayor, we have partnered with Kooching County for work at the airport, and we've been the benefactor of bonding monies to assist in the construction of the new terminal building, and we've also submitted a request through the Airport Commission for bonding bill monies that would be authorized by the state legislature to... to assist in offsetting the cost of the local share for the runway reconstruction and the taxiway reconstruction that are currently underway. We had asked for $2 million, and the legislature, for a number of reasons, did not act on that bill. And you'll hear this in the media, often the bonding bill and the desire to have the bonding bill adopted to try and keep Minnesotans working, providing needed public facilities, infrastructure, and buildings underway in the state. It didn't get adopted in the regular session, and it was on the agenda to be considered and debated in three special sessions. It's assumed that the Governor's gonna hold another special session this month. And to try and keep the need for the bonding bill in the interests of the legislators' minds and at the forefront, it's been recommended by a number of organizations to adopt resolutions like this requesting support of the legislature. And again, our request was for $2 million to help offset the local share of costs on the part of the County and the city for the airport work. And so we're asking that the City Council adopt this resolution or however else you would perhaps like it amended. And in the resolution, it directs me to forward it to Representative Eklund, Senator Bach, Speaker of the House, Senate Majority Leader, House Minority Leader, Senate Minority Leader, and Governor Tim Walz. So we're asking for the council to consider that and...
All right. Well, the Chair would entertain a motion to accept the resolution.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Briggs. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler. Discussion? Do you think that this really will help? I mean, we've been fighting to try to get this bonding bill.
They just mentioned the other day it's gonna go up to them again, so it can't hurt.
Yeah, it can't hurt, but do you think that, what do you think our chances of getting a bonding bill this year yet are?
Well, some of the, and maybe it's just discussion, but you know, some of the legislators are saying, "Well, I haven't heard that much information about the bonding bill, you know, so why do we really have to do it?" You know, and just kind of, it kicks the can down the road, so to speak. So I think by getting this adopted, showing that there's a, you know, governing bodies such as the City of International Falls and the City Council here really interested in requesting that it be acted on, I think that provides some impetus for it to be considered and hopefully approved.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. I will call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have a resolution revising the assigned fund numbers of the airport effective January 1, 2020, approving blanket authorizations for distributing airport grant project receipts. City Administrator.
Briefly, Mayor, you know, we had designated three funds in Resolution 53-20 that we had adopted earlier this year. And in conversations with Civic Systems, which is our software the vendor for our software system, and the auditor, we're thinking that we can't do the conversion the way that we were originally told that we could. So it makes sense for us to keep our fund numbers, at least with the Airport Operations Fund, the same, 612. So we want the council to adopt this resolution to change what we did in 53-20. It changes our fund numbers from 610, 11, and 12 to 612, 13, and 14. And the key here is that the 612 fund, which is the one we use now, will remain unchanged. And that will really help us with the conversion of the accounting system and then help us, over time, to be able to track what we've done pre-2020. So we want to try and do that. And we're looking for the council's authorization to do that. And I would just say the other change is that we were gonna make that effective July 1st. And I think the County agrees with us and our auditors that it would make more sense to do it when the fiscal year ends on December 31st than starting over on January 1st of 2021. So those are the two changes.
All right. So then the Chair would entertain a motion to adopt that resolution. We have a motion by Councilor Briggs.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. Any discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have approved the demolition application for two structures at 2105 and 2107 Third Avenue West. City Administrator. I would've asked Chief Manasa about that, but he's not in the room.
Well Mayor, we have an application for demolition that was prepared by a property owner or owner of the equipment. And their properties are located at 2105 and 2107 Third Avenue West. Because they're non-homesteaded trailer homes that were previously rental units, based on the fact that they're non-homesteaded, our demolition policy apparently requires that the council approve that. And so you can see from the memo that the fire chief had prepared that both trailers are in pretty rough shape, very dilapidated, been an eyesore in the community for an extended period of time. So we're looking for the council to approve the demolition. I don't have further information about how we might actually go about moving the trailers off the property, but our recommendation is is for the council to authorize the demolition and removal.
Okay. Please, yes.
Yes, I just have one comment, Mayor, if I may. To clarify what the City Administrator said, I will read directly out of the demolition policy. So demolition requests for non-homesteaded and/or rental property buildings will be considered by the city on a case-by-case basis. The costs and all city charges will be assessed to the property owner if the council agrees to proceed. So that, from my standpoint, that's why this is here.
Okay. I appreciate that. We actually had a little bit of a discussion about this earlier at the Public Works meeting. Do we have a motion to move forward with this?
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Deech. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion?
I view both these trailers. It's time for them to go.
I would agree with that. They are in very, very rough shape. However, there were some discussions that we had earlier today about it being a trailer house. Do you want to give an update of the conversation that we had earlier?
Well, our discussion is because of them being rentals and being a trailer house, they're almost impossible according to, I mean, it's not impossible, it couldn't be done on site, but they're just a mess to try to take down on site. And what they like to do with them is they put the wheels under them, haul them out to the demo site, and then demo them right on site there instead of having to haul all that stuff out. That's, you know, it's just different material than a house. And so through our discussion, we thought, well, you know, it being our rentals and it's not homesteaded, it's not really our responsibility, but if the landowner wants to give us the land for moving them and demolishing them, we'll take that out of it, but we can't just go and do like we do in a normal demo because it's not a normal demo. And so our discussion was that if they would want to give us the property that these two trailer houses are on, that the city would get that so we could return it back into taxable property where somebody could build on. We may be interested in doing that.
Please. Yeah?
Question. Was this going to go on their taxes then if we demoed it?
And I guess that is the new information that we just got from Chief Manasa, is that if we charge them, I think we should if that's the case, I think, I don't think we put it on the taxes. We
We recoup the money.
We recoup the money. We get money upfront.
I would say do it as long as we recoup the money for doing so.
But then the other question is, is we've been in this position in the past, do we want to just like what happened at the TP property, do we want to remove the building when there are licensed contractors? That that's what their job is, is to remove those properties?
Very good point.
Those are the questions that we're all weighing right now.
Very good point.
We don't want to take other business away.
Right, I agree.
Right now, I know that they're probably somewhere pretty busy, but I'm sure they would like more.
Right, I agree. I didn't think of that.
So the one question, the two ways that we kind of looked at it earlier is if the city was to remove those or remove the trailers and we regain the property, that's something that the city has as an option to put something else there and reuse the sewer and the water and put another home or rental or something, not rental, another home or another trailer there and sell the property to somebody else down the road. However, if we're just removing this for them and we're charging them our cheap rates and then they're gonna sell the property to somebody else, they're gonna be making money off of the city's city's demo policy, which was a rental the entire time. So that's the concerns.
Okay. Now, if we decide not to take these buildings down and they decide not to take them down, would this fall under blight that we could force their hand a little bit?
I guess that would come into the city attorney. Steve, what is your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think that they would qualify, you know, I guess Adam could clarify that better than I, but if they're deemed not habitable, you know, we could do whatever our city orders where we require them to either make it habitable within a certain period of time or we're gonna order it removed. And then our costs would get added to the taxes.
But does that get us any farther ahead by adding it to the tax rolls if we can get paid upfront? You know, I mean, it's all a balancing act.
Well, one of the things that you could consider would be negotiating with the property owner and maybe give them an option. If they don't want to pay the cost of it, maybe an option is transferring ownership of the land to the city in exchange for removing the trailers. I mean, I don't know what the value of the land is and I have no idea what we're looking at in terms of expense. But I would guess, you know, we're probably gonna have several thousand dollars involved in removing the trailers and demoing them. And I have no idea what these lots, if they're vacant, would have for value.
City Administrator, do you have anything to add on the conversation?
No, not specifically. I do know that trailers have been difficult historically for us just because of their condition and the difficulty in moving them, which Councilor Bowler had referenced. So I would just reiterate that, and it becomes problematic for our Public Works crews as to how to go about doing that. And these sound like, and I have not personally viewed the properties, but it sounds like in their very poor condition. So the likelihood of being able to move them with wheels on it on the highways is slim and none.
They are in very rough shape. Well, it would be my suggestion to see if we can't contact the property owners and have a conversation, bring it up. The other thing that came up this morning at the Public Works is this wouldn't be going to our demo site anyways. It's gonna be going to the County, so there's no time issue on this immediately. So we can, we could push this off for two weeks and have a discussion with it in two weeks and kind of talk to the property owner and see what works. It just, it doesn't seem right to me for us to remove the two trailers. She's had purchase, as I also understand from the conversations earlier today, there was offers to buy the property and tear down the trailers, and she denied those. So I think we need to get a little bit more information. So. So we have a motion and a second. Are we willing to table this for two weeks or do we want to vote on it now? And we'll talk to them afterwards.
Let's table it.
Okay. So do we have a motion to table till our next meeting? Do we have a second? We have a second by Briggs. We have a motion to table by Councilor Deech. We have a second by Councilor Briggs. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. We'll have this on our next City Council meeting agenda. Next, consider the Fire Marshal position and job description. Chief Manasa.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't believe there's anything new in here that the council as a whole has not seen already. Again, this is to create a full-time Fire Marshal position. The recommended position would be salaried. The wage is included in the description. How we became or came to the wage was we averaged the comparable salaries between Duluth, Hibbing, Moorhead, Virginia. And that average came out very nicely between currently what the firefighter engineers make and the building official. So I'm comfortable with that wage position. The Civil Service met on Thursday and did approve approve the position within the Fire Department in the Civil Service bylaws, which again, whether the council does approve or does not approve the position at this time, it doesn't matter as far as the bylaws. It's in there. I guess probably the easiest is I'll stand for questions at this point if there's, again, I think everybody's seen most of this, but I will stand for questions.
Question.
Please.
How will this affect your position, your job?
It should be able to do it better.
I just look at all the duties that we have listed here that you'd be responsible for. I mean, we don't want to give you too little work.
I don't think that's gonna be a problem. So I think that's a good point to bring up, Counselor. One of the things we talked about when we look into the essential functions and responsibilities of this job, this is doing stuff that hasn't been done before in our city, some of it. We can be better at what we're doing. I think we have a great Fire Department, but we can do a lot of things better. And this position would help do that. We recently got notification last week that we increased our ISO rating. So we're up to a Class Four department, which is really good. This goes right in behind it. So this is the kind of stuff that we need to do to continue doing good work or better work of what we're doing.
Well, I'm all for it. I just had to ask that question.
Okay. Any other questions for the Chief?
One more question.
Please.
When you mentioned the move in the Category 5.4, explain what that does so people would understand a little better.
The ISO rating is an insurance rating for the underwriters. I cannot speak knowledgeably on how many companies with International Falls use the ISO, and I'm not sure some of the adjusters can, or sorry, independent agents can. It's more on the backend of insurance. Most of the insurance companies use the ISO rating in determining rates for insurance. So potentially, for specifically commercial but residential as well, we could potentially see decreased insurance rates within the City of International Falls because of this jump in rating. So depending on the insurance company specifically and how they use that number, you could see decreases in insurance rates for the city. So we're pretty happy about that.
Thanks, Adam.
So I have, I appreciate the fact that you have outlined a salary position for it, which is $67,237.63 annually. It would be a non-union position. And what would the process be to fill that position?
What I would like to see is if this gets approved tonight, I would like to put the posting out tomorrow. It was discussed earlier. All previous positions within the Fire Department are open to Fire Department members first. So we would follow that through our Civil Service. Any firefighter on the department would be able to apply for the position. If we had a suitable candidate within the department, we could fulfill that position. If not, we could go to an outside posting. I'm fairly confident we will have, I'm very confident, not fairly, I'm very confident, we will be able to fill that position internally. What I would like to foresee is post it tomorrow morning. I'd like to run it through next Thursday, get interviews done if we need to on Friday or possibly Saturday to have a council proposal by the following council meeting. One of the reasons I want to do this is dependent on who the applicant, successful applicant is, we could have a vacancy in our engineer position. And I want to get that filled as soon as possible. So this would go hand in hand with that.
And I appreciate the speed that you'd like to do that. When would you see this position actually starting?
Well, that's something we need to have a discussion about. I guess realistically, it could be January 1st of 2021. It could be, you know, pick a date, November 1st or something to that effect.
Okay. The reason I ask that very specific question is because if we're looking at funding this through the rental licensing agreement or licensing code or whatever that was. through the rental licensing agreement, or licensing code, or whatever that was, we need to get that in place. We need to be able to have that scheduled and ready to move forward before we can put this person in place, because if we can't, we're not going to be able to fund the position.
Yes and no.
Okay.
The reason I say that is I think the person that does successfully could get this job, I think needs to be involved in that process, laying out the rental licensing. I think we have the blueprint, I think we have a rough draft, but I think that person could have some very good input on the specifics of that rental licensing agreement. I'm not, I guess I'm talking generically. I don't know that we could get a licensing, rental licensing in place by the first of the year. Maybe we could, maybe we couldn't, I don't know. We might have to take it on the chin for a year, I don't know, but I do think this person would have some valuable input to that process, and should be involved in that process.
And I think that that is the scariest piece of the entire thing, is I really want to see that licensing agreement in place at some point, because, I'll be honest, we have, we've had that licensing agreement on the back burner for six, eight years. Before, I've been on city council anyways, and if we're going to get it done, we need to move forward, because I don't want it to be another six years where we have an unfunded position that we're adding.
And to follow up with that, I could make the argument, we could make the position January 1st, bust our humps to get rental licensing in place January 1st, maybe, maybe not. If it comes into effect July 1st of 2021, we're still covering the budget for that year.
Okay. That's a very good point that I didn't pick up on, it doesn't matter when you put it into place. All right, any, any questions, any additional questions for Chief Manasseh?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I actually, I don't have a question, but I do want to point out that the rental licensing is already in our code of ordinances, we're just not enforcing it. So I mean, a lot of the work is done, there's more work to do, and you know how I feel about this, this is one of, you know, one of the things that I hold near and dear to my heart, but I would like to point out that the rental license agreement is already in our code of ordinances, we're just not enforcing it.
Thank you. All right, so we have the council's pleasure with the fire marshal position and job description. We have a motion to accept?
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deech. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I think, I'm for it too, but I'm really concerned about the funding of it, and the sooner we get this licensing thing in place, I'd feel a lot better about it. I just don't want to, I hate to go out in a higher position, we're thinking we're going to get it funded by that, and then we don't go and do it, follow through. We have to follow through with that, for sure. Without that, this job won't exist.
Right, and that's my concern. I wouldn't be in favor of the position becoming before we actually have the funding available for it. We have to, you know, because it's not right that we're going to put it on the taxpayers to fund that until we get that figured out. We need to get the funding figured out first.
Right now.
Okay, well, with that being said, we can meet as a Land Use and Legislation Committee as an ongoing basis to try to hammer this out. Ken, do you, where do you, how long do you see us coming up with a plan for this?
Well, Mayor, I think a plan can be put together between now and the time that we would be adopting a preliminary budget, which would be by the end of the month, so I think, you know, it can be a conversation about potential funding sources and how that fits into the overall budget for the city. We have to have a preliminary budget and a levy in place by the end of this month and submit it to the county auditor. Of course, that budget wouldn't be effective until January 1st, but I mean, I think we can put something together. It's going to need some financial analysis to see what the cost for an annual rental license would be, and then how many rental units do we have, and just cost it out that way in terms of the big picture aggregate kinds of things, and then see how much, how much money would be generated, and that would be a council decision. You know, if you decide that the licensing fee is $50 versus $200 a year, or $100, will have a bearing on the revenue that we generate from it.
Right, but as for putting it all together and being able to enforce the licensing that Counselor Kraus has already pointed out, is already on our books, it shouldn't be a problem, it's just doing the math to try to figure it out?
Well, I think for the big picture things, but, you know, the devil's always in the details, so we need to set up an inspection regimen. I know that when the Legislation and Land Use Committee was looking at it years ago, they were talking about, well, maybe you only have to do an inspection once every three years. But what I'm hearing from staff is when you're out in the field and you're looking at these properties, maybe six months is too long. It just kind of depends on the landlord, the tenants, the condition of the property to start with, and who you have in there. There's a number of variables and stuff, so we need to set up an inspection regimen, inspection forms, and I think that's some of the issues where the Fire Chief would like to have the new candidate involved in how that all comes together, because they're going to be involved in implementing the program. It really, a lot of it rests in my lap, because we've got three different sections of our city code that deal with rental licensing or issues related to licensing and property management. So we've talked about consolidating, or modifying and repealing sections of three chapters and adopting one chapter that deals with housing inspections and property maintenance and putting in one. And I have a draft. It needs a lot more work, but I can start with the new draft. The work is somewhat based on what sections are we going to repeal in the existing code, and what do we want to retain? And, you know, I need input from the Fire Chief and the current person that's doing that work right now, as well as the building inspector, and, but I think we can move forward, and we can move forward quickly. I mean, I know it's been a high priority for the council for quite a period of time.
Okay, so that is something that we could, if we were to open up this position, we would definitely be able to get it ready and move forward by January 1st?
Yes, I think that's very reasonable.
Okay.
First thing on the agenda.
Yep. All right, any other questions? All right, Chair, we call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Next, we have considered the Fire Civil Service recommendations to appoint Fire Department officers. Yeah, don't go too far. Chief Manasseh?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So for some time, we've been without proper officers in the Fire Department. We had a retirement in the end of, near the end of February. We normally reappoint those positions immediately after it happens. We have not, up until recently, had Civil Service meetings or Fire meetings. So our Assistant Chief, David Voller, retired in February, and we've ran basically without an Assistant Chief, which operationally is okay for a period of time, but now it's time to make those appointments. So we did have a Civil Service meeting last Thursday, and these appointments were brought before the Civil Service and approved by them. At this time, I'd like to recommend Andrew Eldine move up from a captain's position to fill the Assistant Chief's position, Safety Officer Ryan Zub to move up to captain, and then appoint firefighter John Winkle into the Safety Officer position. So all of these people have attributes that would fulfill them greatly in these positions or appointments. Specifically, you know, Andrew has been on the department for 17 years, I believe it is, going on 18. He's got a very good working knowledge, he's been a captain for many years, so him moving up into the Assistant Chief position, I'm very, very excited about. Ryan Zub has made his ranks in the Safety Officer, moving up to captain should be an easy transition for him. And specifically, again, John Winkle, we're kind of breaking rank a little bit, he's not the eldest firefighter to move into an officer position, but again, he's got both enthusiasm and, I think, the right mindset to be a Safety Officer for the Fire Department, so I'm pretty excited to make those appointments.
Okay, so Chair would entertain a motion to accept those appointments of Andrew Eldine to Assistant Chief, Ryan Zub to Captain, and John Winkle to Safety Officer.
So moved.
So moved. All second.
By Counselor Buller. We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Chair would, any discussion? I call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have the Public Works Committee recommendation from earlier this afternoon. We, well, actually, I'll let the Public Works Chair discuss those.
We were approached here last July, I think it was, or June or July, about a sign that the Senator Babakas and some other donators wanted to build and put up in Green Acres because of the new playground facilities that were put up in 2018, and they wanted a sign to have Green Acres on it, and the donation buys these organizations for the new equipment in the park there. They're about three, three foot wide and five foot high, is what they said, and then Fairchild's will be making them. They'll be mounted on four-by-four, treated four-by-fours if they can find them anywhere. And they look, they look really nice, they got supports across the back of them, and they got plastic tops on them, and they'll actually install them themselves too. If the Public Works Director was there at the time, and he said that he would find a spot where they can install them, so they do all of it, install and hold the thing, so. We just wanted to get the approval of the whole council to let them go ahead and do it.
So is that a motion?
I'll make a motion, yep.
All right, we have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Any other business come before the council? All right, we'll go to reports of boards, committees, and department heads. City Administrator?
Briefly, Mayor, I just wanted to give you an update. Staff has been working hard in the administration office, and I just wanted to give you an update on the water sewer bill delinquency as of, we have some information as of September 3rd, and we have it broken out in tiers of 30 days, 60 days, 90, 120, 150, 180, and 210 days. For instance, with people with delinquencies over 210 days, there's seven accounts, and there's about $3,700 in accounts that are, or dollars overdue for 210 days. The total is about 235 accounts, and the total delinquent amount is $37,121.27. Again, that's as of September 3rd, so in the fall of the year, we typically come before the council and certify some of these for payment by, as assessments, and that would happen in October. I just wanted to give you that update, and right now, we're not doing any water shut-offs because of the executive order of the governor not allowing that, so.
Any questions for the city attorney, or city administrator? I have two. The first one came up while you were discussing the rental licensing agreement, you said that we have rental licensing comes into four different spots of the city ordinances. Did we ever get the comprehensive plan done that put together all of our ordinances that we had paid for?
Well, yeah, the comprehensive plan has been completed and adopted by the city council.
Yeah.
The zoning code, or the land use regulations, which is in Chapter 11 of the city code, and the subdivision ordinance, which would have been the ordinance that would have applied for approving the final plan like we had tonight for the first edition of the industrial part, those have been prepared and are being reviewed, and we anticipate the city council acting on those in October. Probably want to talk about it at a committee of the whole to go over the detail, but the consultant has provided a draft, which was sent, I sent to you and the building official and myself, and so it's being reviewed.
Okay, and then my other question is, is where are we with the ATVs and the, because we've had that come out of committee, but I just...
Yep, I'm working on that ordinance too. I was hoping to have it distributed to the council. It will be distributed to the council this week, I've started on it, I don't have it done.
Okay.
One of the provisions for that is that we'll have to do licensing of some of the special use vehicles like golf carts, they'll have to be licensed, so.
Right, and that was the slow-moving vehicle.
Yep.
Yep, gotcha. Okay, city attorney, blight report pending criminal blight cases?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. I did submit earlier, and I think it was in the addition, late addition to the packet, a itemized list of the criminal cases that we've brought against individuals for blight violations, and I think there's 13 or 14 different cases. One of the properties, one individual has two properties that have been cited, and then I think it was one property that has two people living there, so we've cited them both. We did have, the first case that we had brought involved 102 Riverview Boulevard, that was actually resolved, we had court today, and Jared Baldwin indicated that the problems had been corrected. So what we do in those situations, we then continue the case for a year for dismissal upon two conditions. One, that they pay the $150 administrative fee that's in our ordinance, and two, that there be no same or similar issues within the next year. So that case has all been resolved, the rest are pending, and there are probably eight or 10 other properties that we're looking at bringing criminal action within the next week or so if they don't make the corrections that they have committed to making. If people are making progress, we tend to delay the beginning of the criminal action, and when they're just ignoring us, or thumbing their nose at us, is when we've been bringing the criminal complaints. And I think that all these actions have been successful, they've become unpopular. I get lots of phone calls from angry property owners and business owners, but I commend Jared Baldwin, he's been doing this job very tenaciously, and he's been a pleasure to work with, and I think we only have him able to do this for a couple more weeks, and I think he's due to have some surgery, but it's gotten a lot of attention. I don't remember the exact number, but I think he indicated that with regard to vehicles and other items, there've been more than 100 of those that have been hauled off the property from where they were originally cited. So progress is being made, it's a slow process, but I think it's been successful.
All right, well, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the city attorney? Please.
I agree with you, Jared Baldwin's been doing an excellent job, and I'm addressing this to Mr. Schimon, he's been doing an excellent job. That being said, what can we do about these businesses, commercial properties, that clean up a little bit, and then it goes right back to where it was after they've got it cleaned up the first time, or they never complete the cleanup?
Well, we just have to stay on top of them, and I think the businesses tend to, you know, I've had three or four calls from different businesses over the past week or 10 days, and I think they're, they're sensitive, you know, I think as business owners, they're, many of them are struggling just to keep their businesses afloat during these difficult times with the virus, and they're not happy about having to make these improvements or take these actions that we're asking them to do. And so I've encouraged them, if they thought it wasn't fair, that they ought to appear before the council and express their feelings to the council, and I know one of the problems with the local business we've been dealing with, they've got a... got a kind of an outbuilding, not the main building for their business, but a storage type facility, and it's been in poor repair for many years. They've, first, they thought they were going to try to make the repairs themselves, and they bought the materials, but then they didn't have the skill level to make the repairs. And because of the situation this summer, they have not been able to find a contractor that's available to do the work. And so, I've given them some more time and, you know, trying to exercise my discretion that if people are working on it and making progress, we're not going to charge them criminally, but we need to stay on top of them. And, you know, there are, there are several businesses that are probably in the next group that I'm going to be charging criminally. At this point in time, I've only charged individual property owners and not any businesses, but I would expect, unless there's more progress made, when I make my report in two weeks, there's going to be some businesses that are pending criminal charges.
Okay, I'm not so much talking about the building that you are there, that you've been referring to. What I'm talking about is basically a business gets cited for grass, or somebody goes and talks to them, grass weeds, so on, they do the trimming, and then they let it grow right back up again in a month that looks as bad, if not worse, as it did before. Or another building, another business cleans up part of their lot with various equipment, debris, leftover materials, and then they leave the rest of it just sit there. It's just like the job's never been finished, and they kind of thumb their nose at us. I kind of get the feeling that the businesses are getting a little bit better break than our residents and our homes. As I say, Mr. Baldwin's doing a great job, but the businesses, what people see as they drive into International Falls, and if you've got a bunch of grass and weeds growing in between debris laying there, it looks bad. And I guess, how many times you keep telling them, cut your grass, cut your grass?
Well, I think on the grass, it's my understanding that if grass doesn't cut, we go in and cut it and bill them for it, and so, you know, I think most of these grass things get cleaned up. I think the junk and property and trash is more of a problem, and, you know, a number of these businesses, they store some of their products outside and they're visible, and, you know, they feel they should be able to do that, and, you know, we, in the eyes of some, it's blight, and in the eyes of others, they're just trying to do business. You know, it's a real, it's a difficult situation, and it's a fine line that we walk, and, you know, I know it's a priority to the council and particularly to you, Leon, and, you know, I guess, I try to use my best judgment, but I, you know, if you've got specific things that's properties where you want action taken, I would encourage you to, you know, come and meet with me and give me the information, and, you know, I've been just tremendously busy, you know, I think the last, this blight, it's a lot of work, but it's also a big expense to the city. I think my last two, I know, my last two monthly bills have been the two highest bills that I've submitted in 10 years of being the city attorney. And so, we're giving it the attention, but, and also, you know, I'm not, I'm not a full-time employee of the city. I'm an independent contractor, and I've got a private legal practice, and it's hard for me to devote as much time as I probably should to these things. So, some of the delays is just a matter of my not having the staff available to create the documentation, follow up. My assistant, I've only got one employee in my office, and she's been gone for, I think, three of the last six weeks, so that's been part of the issue, but, you know, this stuff takes a lot of time and a lot of effort, and it just, and the whole process of criminal proceedings and court proceedings doesn't happen quickly.
Yeah, I agree. You're working very hard, and you're doing a good job. I just see these same businesses just sliding through, and as I say, this is the second summer that I've been on this council, basically punching at these few businesses that just came to, seemed to thumb their nose at us. And I just think we've got to give a little more attention to them and get this straightened up. One man's opinion, but as I say, I push blight. Thank you.
Well, I don't disagree. I don't disagree, and, you know, again, I anticipate that unless there's significant progress in a couple of businesses between now and the next council meeting, we're probably going to have some businesses that are on this list of criminal cases.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else with the city attorney?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Chief, Fire Chief, Housing Inspector? No?
I don't think I have anything to add, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Audience, open forum, does anyone have anything to bring forward to the city council at this time? I'm sorry, I skipped, reports to the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. Anything? All right. We will have our next meeting in two weeks on Monday, September 21st, at 5:30. This meeting is adjourned.